Good evening. I'd like to call the order for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, Palatine County Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. McClung, if you would help us with the lead, uh, Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Cox, we will do the indication.
The United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for another wonderful day in Palatine. Thank you for the rain, which we need. Give us guidance and give us patience as we do the people's business. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Now, I just like to remind all members, as we were just reminded, but I'll remind you again, we have to control our microphones here at the Landmark Center. And when the public comes up to speak, the microphone is hot, so it's live. When you get there, you won't need to hit it to turn it on or off, but members up here, we all need to uh, turn our microphones on. Are there any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
On Friday of last week, I sent the following email to the board. On Tuesday of this week, that would be last week, Mr. McClung asked that we discuss compensation for constitutional officers in closed session. No other information was provided. On Thursday of this week, Mr. Mc, excuse me, on Thursday, Mr. Timberlake sent an unsolicited model for determining compensation for constitutional officers. That model provided rationale for several significant salary increases. I have no problem discussing a formula, a model, or a system for compensating constitutional officers, if that's the desire of this board. What does give me pause is having this discussion in closed session, which excludes the public's notice and participation. At Monday's meeting, I will ask that you support, this is the, the board, a motion removing the closed session discussion on compensation of constitutional officers from the agenda and scheduling it for a workshop of the county administrators choosing. While I'm sure you do not need to be reminded, the school board found out how very clear, found out very clearly how sensitive the citizens are, the remuneration of elected officials. With that, uh, Mr. Barley, I would like to make a motion that we remove the closed session discussion of compensation of constitutional officers from the agenda.
So to repeat the motion by Mr. Cox, it's to remove the conversation we were to have in closed session about the compensation for constitutional officers in Palatine County. Is that the motion that you wish?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, and then that if, if the board wishes, we can have this discussion at another time.
Okay. Do you have a second, anyone?
I'll start it.
Okay, we have a second. That opens the floor for conversation. Is there any conversation?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Um, I would like to, first, I concur with you, Mr. Cox. I think this is, should be a discussion that we have out in the open. Um, I would like to, I don't know if this would be a amendment to your motion, but instead of moving it to a workshop, start some preliminary discussions of this tonight to see if this is something that the board even wants to pursue. So instead of putting it off on a workshop, I would propose that we move it under new business C, and at least just have a preliminary discussion, because obviously, nothing is going to happen. Any votes are going to be taken tonight, but let's at least get it out in the open.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Um, Mrs. Carmack, I understand, uh, the process of wanting to start it. The problem I have with that is that the public is not here, uh, and in fact, we know nothing about any of the other constitutional officers. Uh, and so I don't see that being particularly useful, uh, until we have, uh, one, the public involved, and two, we know where the other constitutional officers stand. And so, uh, my motion stands, um, unamended.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I counter that?
Sure, certainly, go right on.
Why don't we discuss if we are even going to fancy giving them substantial raises until the next, next budget cycle?
Mr.
Do you see, you know what I'm saying? I mean, why are, I mean, are we even going to talk about giving them a, and these are sizable raises we're talking about. So do we even want to talk about it, or?
Mr. Chairman?
We'll bring it up in the budget?
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Carmack, uh, it is, as I said, uh, it is the board's, um, decision. We don't have to discuss this at all.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, I simply laid out the option, if we wanted to, to get it out so the public was involved. Uh, I think moving it, uh, to the next board, which is the next budget cycle, uh, would make a lot of sense to me. I, it doesn't have to go to a workshop. I just want to get it out in the open where people understand what's happening. That's all. If, you know, I would be happy to support that.
Okay.
So, um, does anyone else want to make any comment?
This will make one, Mr. Chair. Um, the reason I asked for closed sessions is because all of the other, uh, constitutional officers that we gave adjustments to, we did it in closed session. That's why I asked for this. And I feel like some of our constitutional officers have been discriminated against not being a part of that discussion. So that's why I brought it up. That's why I wanted to do it in closed session, because I didn't want to bring matters like that out into the public tonight, but we can do it, you know, tonight now. I'm, I agree with Ms. Carmack. We can do it in open session.
Okay.
Instead of closed.
Mr. Williams, any comments?
I agree with Mr. Cox. I think any discussion we have, public needs to be notified in advance if we choose to have the discussion. You know, that's the other thing. Um, but that said, if we do have any discussions, it needs to be in the public with public notice, and we need to have everybody here that's going to be affected by anything that we discuss. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Mr. Cox.
Uh, one other point that's salient, uh, all of this is foible. There's nothing that's protected. Anybody can have it if they want it. Okay, so there are no secrets. They just don't know that it exists.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so are you making a, an amended motion? Is that what you're doing, Ms. Carmack?
Correct, to see if the board wants to pursue this in a generality, if we want to even talk about it in a workshop.
The amended motion would be to ask the members of the board if we want to have a discussion this evening in public with the information that we currently have about whether we want to pursue it further, make a decision tonight, or seek more information.
Correct.
That would be the amended motion?
Correct. Let's make a decision if we're going to have a workshop on this, or what the board brothers are regarding this topic with the information we have.
Okay.
Mr. Barley, Ms. Barley, I'm confused. That's different than what I heard Mrs. Carmack said. Okay, just re- repeat what you're saying, and I'll go at it from there.
I'll keep it real simple. Do we want to talk about this tonight to see if the board wants to pursue even giving them a raise, or is this something that we want to put off for the next board? That's it. There's no point in scheduling a workshop if three of us don't even want to talk about it. That, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Barley, then, uh, the motion would be to remove it, uh, from the agenda tonight. That's it?
No, that's not it. No, that's not it. I don't think she said.
Under Roberts' rules, you made a motion to remove it from the agenda and schedule for a work session.
Correct.
She is amending the schedule it for a work session to discuss whether to schedule it for a work session tonight. So that's, her amendment is to your motion.
Understand that.
You said schedule for a work session. Her amendment is, let's discuss whether we even want to set schedule it for work.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
I'm going to make another amendment. I know that's going to be.
Need, need a second on hers first, if there's going to be.
So does, is there a second to Ms. Carmack's amendment?
Second.
I'm going to make a third amendment. I'm going to amend Mr. Cox's motion to omit having a workshop, to remove it from the agenda tonight.
So your motion?
Was, Mr. Attorney, Mr. County Attorney, was to remove it from the agenda tonight and have it discussed on a future workshop. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Williams. That's exactly the way I understand.
My amendment, Mr. County Attorney, is to drop the last part, to simply remove it from our agenda tonight.
So you're amending?
Yes.
You're amending her discussion and saying, we don't even discuss, we just take it off the agenda and?
Actually, I wasn't amending her discussion. I was amending his. It was the second amendment to her first amendment.
He's amending, Ms. Carmack.
I'm sure.
Amending.
You can't amend his.
Supervisor Carmack said.
I got it.
Yeah, we're good. So now you need a second on his.
Second. Do we have a second? Or Mr. Motion, oh, Mr. Motion's, Mr. Williams' motion to just remove it from the agenda tonight. Okay, so there's a second on that. That'll be the first motion we vote on.
First motion you vote on.
So the motion that we're going to vote on as an amended motion to Ms. Carmack's motion is, Mr. Williams wants to have it completely removed from the agenda this evening. Let's do a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Williams? Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Carmack?
No.
Mr. Barley?
No. Now, the motion is Ms. Carmack's to have this compensation plan for the constitutional officers discussed this evening.
Discussion as to whether to put it on a future work session. That's.
Discussion this evening as to whether to put it on a future.
Correct.
Workshop.
clarity on the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Discussion is to be limited to whether or not we're just going to have any further discussion on this and another workshop on me.
Yeah, that was her, that was her amendment, yes.
Okay, so we're not going to be discussing anything else, uh, other than that one issue.
Well, and what's germane to that issue, there may be, you know, there may be arguments as to why somebody does or doesn't want to have any workshops. So, but as long as your arguments are related to whether it should or shouldn't be on a workshop, they would be germane and related to the amended motion.
Let's get this done.
Good. Um, does everybody understand the motion?
Ms. Carmack's motion.
Ms. Carmack's amended motion, okay.
Aye.
Roll, roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Barley?
Aye. Now, we need to vote on Mr. Cox's original motion?
Yeah, it, since you voted unanimously and literally the original motion is that motion, we'll dispense with, with another vote.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Ms. Scott.
Where do we put this?
We're going to move that to, uh, new business eleven C.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other addition, because that was so lengthy. Any other additions, deletions, changes in the order of presentation? If not, can I have a motion for approval? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. County Administrator updates?
A few things this evening for you. Uh, the Fighting Creek Park Bridge, um, that has been closed for some time now. Uh, repairs are going to start next week on that and slated to be finished by October first. I know that's, uh, long awaited and looking forward to that. Uh, then Firefly Broadband had a lot of questions about the status of that and how that's going. Um, we're going to have them out and, uh, with us in October to give a full update. Uh, but they were able to share that so far they've laid fifteen miles of fiber in Palatine, um, a lot more to be laid. And within the next few weeks, they'll be making actual connections to homes, to some of those first people who've signed up for service. Uh, but again, they're going to have their team out here in October, giving the board and public a full update on how that broadband project is proceeding. Uh, then to update you on the Hope House Two Domestic Shelter, uh, that's where we are working with the state of Virginia to get some land, uh, from them around the Beaumont property. Uh, surveying is underway now for that project, and, uh, county attorney, um, and state staff are working on finalizing some of the agreements, uh, for that, but that continues to move along. And then, uh, we have our twenty twenty-three first responders run and, um, nine eleven memorial celebration. Uh, so that will be starting September eighth, Friday, uh, eleven forty-five PM. So just before midnight, the run will start, uh, and then the next day, Saturday, September ninth, from nine to six, uh, will be the actual, uh, First Responders Day celebration. Um, and that will have a silent auction, DJ, raffle, um, t-shirts for sale, uh, running laps around the track, uh, and food truck available. And that's all I have this evening.
Progress, that's good. Thank you. Um, next up?
Yep, now, we have a, uh, real estate assessment update. Um, Mr. Doug Flynn, our chief assessor, and Jamie Timberlake, Commissioner of Revenue, are here to give an update on some of the trends and data that they're seeing.
Jamie Timberlake, fourteen fifty Schroeder Road, Commissioner of Revenue. Um, just a quick, you know, update, tell you we're fully staffed in that office now. Been pretty exciting to, uh, you know, get to that level. Um, two of them have actually passed their first two certifications. Um, so that's been exciting to see them grow. We are caught up a hundred percent on all of the backlog of the, uh, building permits, all the new, new construction. So all of that stuff has been caught up and, uh, billed, supplemented, and most of it's actually already been collected. Um, the last thing I would say is that we are, uh, on schedule to get this reassessment out the door by mid-October, late October at the, at the latest. Have all those hearings this fall, so back on, you know, what a schedule should be instead of this year dealing with it in February and March while we're trying to deal with the budget. We'll have some good known numbers, um, by probably November, December for you. So, uh, Doug has a specific, um, presentation with actual numbers, but just wanted to give you that update and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening to the respective members of the board. Uh, I'm here to present our quarterly update for the Real Estate Assessments Department.
Maybe.
Well. Okay, here we go. Okay, part of our team has been diligently working on new construction, residential building permits, residential addition permits, and a handful of commercial new construction outfit permits. The median number of new residential permits has been fourteen per month, fourteen residential addition per month. April and May were our two strongest production months. In addition to a myriad of customer service calls and in-service, another star of our team researched and processed an average of a hundred and twenty-one deeds of partition and conveyance per month. Strongest month in volume was March at a hundred and forty-eight deeds with another impressive tally of a hundred and thirty-eight in July. Beginning of the year to the end of July, there have been two hundred and thirteen residential sales around MLS. Volume of sales year-to-date compared to last year is down around twenty-two percent. And we have the same trend as the first quarter. The number of pending sales is down. Days on market that it takes a home to sell has increased by over seventy percent. Median sales price of a home in Palatine is currently four hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven fifty, reflecting an increase of slightly more than one percent since last year. Um, median new construction of either built in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three is five hundred ninety-seven thousand. Had a couple of significant changes since last year is, is number of listings has dropped by over thirty percent. Available inventory remains low. On average, there's a two-month inventory and typical market would be around five to six months supply. Median sales price increases of homes in Palatine are tracking consistently above and with similar trajectory with wider central Virginia market. Uh, for commercial leased properties, average occupancy is still in the healthy range of ninety-eight percent, though rental rates have leveled off. We have four commercial properties under contract. Have several active listings on office building for other commercial and eighteen land sites. So far, there have been three commercial sales in twenty twenty-three. So the Federal Reserve has had four more quarter point increases since the beginning of the year, and those continued tightening tools raised borrowing costs, which, uh, thirty-year fixed mortgage rate has reached its highest level in over twenty years. When I had this presentation prepared last week to deliver tonight, the average was seven point nine percent on thirty-year, and the fifteen-year was at six point four six. As of today, the average thirty-year fixed rate is at seven point two-three percent. The phenomenon of golden handcuffs is real, was why there are so few active listings for homes for sale. Half the mortgage holders are locked in, they're at two point seven five, three percent mortgage rates, and they're not willing to sell, moves into somewhere else unless they're paying in excess of seven percent, unless they really have to move. For example, the average mortgage size in the U.S. is four hundred and seven thousand. The monthly payment difference on that thirty-year mortgage at seven point two-three versus two point seven five would be a one thousand one hundred and nine dollars per month. Another stat, to afford that average four hundred and seven thousand thirty-year mortgage at seven point two, and assuming no other monthly debt, one would have to have a hundred nine thousand dollars household income. House affordability is the lowest it's been since nineteen eighty-four. So, Real Estate Assessments, we will begin implementing a new computer-assisted mass appraisal software system this fall. It's, it's called Vision. Next week, we should have our very first kickoff. Vision is a well, well-respected and trusted software by over five hundred localities in over sixteen states. Many, uh, fellow Virginia localities utilize it such as Albemarle, Augusta, Charlottesville, Culpeper, Essex, Hanover, Harrisonburg, Henrico, Norfolk, Salem, and a couple more. You have any questions?
Board members? Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. Okay. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Flynn? I do. Mr. Flynn, before you leave there?
Yes, Mr. Barley.
I didn't quite hear. You, you made a comment, house affordability is the lowest it's been since when?
Nineteen eighty-four.
And a four hundred and seventy thousand dollar mortgage this year is a thousand dollars more than it was last year. Two point seven five versus seven point oh-nine percent APR.
Right. Uh, uh, average is four hundred and seven thousand. So, yeah, the difference between a seven point two-three percent thirty-year fixed versus two point seven five be a thousand one hundred and nine dollars per month.
Thank you.
You are.
Okay, Mr. Timberlake, Mr. Cox has a question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Timberlake, uh, real estate's caught up. That's great. Personal property?
Uh, we just finished May. Uh, we'll probably start June this week, uh, in discussions with the Treasurers, whether we want to try and freeze those and just build them all in November. So in other words, the people who we deal with between June and, say, October, it would all be in their one bill in November for supplements or credits. Same thing. It would be show of this credit in there November. So we're probably going to get one more supplement out the door that'll be due before that, and then everything else will just tie into November as close as we can get to being caught up.
Sounds like, uh, since the first.
Excuse me. Sounds like since the first quarter, you've made significant progress with that backlog.
Yeah, we have, and Keystone's been, you know, very helpful in that. They're doing a lot of the background work, um, for abatements and, uh, things that they can see. It's a lot harder for them to do supplements because they'd have to learn all of our procedures and the way that we pick things up and what day we pick it up and all that kind of stuff. So it was a lot harder for them to help with the supplemental side, but abatements are pretty much straightforward. When it was sold or moved to another locality, there's no decision to make, so.
Uh, in terms of real estate, we're still not using Keystone?
No, sir. No, we're, so, um, and I didn't burst his bubble and tell you about Vision. I was letting him do that, but Vision is the company that bought out our existing software. So we're not actually in a total conversion. We're just basically upgrading to a new, newer model and through some very stringent negotiations, uh, kept things in the same price range, at least for the first year. And then next year, we'll have to discuss. I mean, they were, their company is three times the value of what the company we were with. Not Keystone, but Stonewall, just our camera system. Um, I mean, this has opened a whole nother, um, set of software tools to us.
But you have no, at this point, no plans to take real estate into Keystone, is that right?
Uh, I mean, if we can manage this place, I mean, you know, the reason Vision wasn't considered before it was priced. So if we can negotiate that reasonably, then, I mean, we, we can stay with Vision.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. That'll bring us to our first public comment period. You have three minutes. You'd like to come up and speak to the board, uh, as an individual, if you'd like to speak to the board as a member of a group. You have five minutes. You will need to state your full name and address.
Jamie Timberlake, fourteen fifty Schroeder Road, Commissioner of Revenue. I think we're still going to talk about something later in the agenda. That was completely confusing. If you want to confuse the public, do that again. Um, the only reason that, uh, constitutional officer's salary was on the closed session was because that's the way that the past ten, three of which this board has done, have been handled. Um, I, if, if you wanted to do an open session, I would have put it out two months ago. I mean, we were, I have been very vocal in saying that I would never come ask for a raise for myself until the people were taken care of. That happened last month. Thank you again. I thanked you last month for it. It was a huge step in the right direction. But I'm clear, I, I, I mean, Mr. Barley even said it at the last meeting. He hoped that we would consider the other seven people who were not part of that salary study. There's money in the budget already there in this year's budget for compensation. Um, I mean, we can go back multiple times under this board and see constitutional officers were supposed to be talked about in twenty twenty. We didn't know what happened with COVID, so we were going to wait and discuss it halfway through the year. We had an eight point nine million dollar surplus, if I remember the number correctly, and never even was put on the agenda. And I personally wrote each of your emails, November of twenty twenty, and was told, oh, we didn't guarantee we would come back and talk about it. We getting tired of it. I mean, I, I'm visually upset, emotionally upset. I've waited long enough. When I saw Berkeley's presentation and how easy it would have been to implement, uh, it for the constitutional officers, I simply put together a graph. I wasn't telling you to consider something for the future. I was just offering you a tool that you paid a lot of money for that could be used in the same way. To say or insinuate that I tried to do or that any of the constitutional officers tried to do something without talking to the public about it is offensive. Nothing else but offensive. I simply asked Mr. McClung to get it on an agenda so that it could be discussed in closed session the same way it's been done with every other constitutional officer, again, three of which you've handled in the last eighteen months, but not me. So I'm looking forward to this conversation. I think we're going to have it a little bit, but I wasn't sure exactly how that ended up. I, I look forward to discussing it in an open session.
Thank you, sir. We'll close the public comment period. Consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And motion carries. We'll bring us to old business. Short on?
We have, uh, this rezoning case ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, uh, rezoning twenty-three oh seven. Uh, Mr. Quan's rezoning case was deferred from July twenty-fourth to this meeting. Um, And Mr. Sorillo, our planning director, has a brief summary of what's been updated since the board last looked at this.
Thank you and good evening. Since we last met, I mean, since the packet went out, actually, there was an amendment to the proffer statement. We added, I cleaned it up a little bit because there was a third proffer which sort of hanging out there, not on this list. And so, it seemed to me like it would be easier for you all and for everyone else to follow it if I added it to the proffer list. So, you'll see that as proffer. Number three is attachment A. That development will include stubouts for future vehicular connections to adjacent property lines as shown on the attached plan. The attached plan is part of easement that you requested in our last meeting. Public access, public access will be granted to these by recorded easement. The fourth proffer, this is new, that the development will include a right turn lane off of US sixty. The VOT, VDOT minimum one hundred foot by one hundred foot taper in storage dimensions. In addition, the right turn lane will tie into the existing western turn lane. These plans will be reviewed and approved by VDOT and Powhatan County staff for final approval. The applicant has agreed to these proffers. Yep.
It's just, okay. Board members, comments, questions?
We have an updated proffer statement. But that is not reflected in our ordinance that we're going to be passing.
I'm sorry. We have an updated proffer statement with four proffers, which is fine, nice and clean. I like those. But our actual zoning ordinance that we're going to be voting on does not reflect those. Okay, so if you look on page fifty-two and fifty-three of your packet, you won't find proffer four. Mr. Lackney, what's the easiest way to make it to reflect what Mr. Sorillo has done, but make it part of the actual ordinance?
It'd be a motion to adopt the ordinance incorporating the updated proffers.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you have a comments? Anyone have any motion to make?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. Before I make the motion, we ought to be thinking about Route sixty. Mike and the county administrator and I had a visit to GRTC off of Bell Boulevard in Richmond. Right off Route sixty. Near George Wood High School. So, we got a chance to see what development and access management looks like in that area between Chippingham and Bell Boulevard and right off of Route sixty, right there, you know, next to GRTC. We looked at what had happened with Chesterfield and Richmond with the lack of planning. All you have to do is drive down there. One of the things that's going to jump out at you when you go down there is the fact that you've got all these entrances right there side by side. Lack of landscaping. What I'm saying is, we don't have the ordinances today that we need for the Route sixty tomorrow. And if we do nothing, I'm going to share with you what I've told other people. Development is going to come to Route sixty. We don't have to do a thing. It's going to come. Now, the question is, are we going to be happy with it ten, twenty years from now? So, it's very important that we get the ordinances in place to make sure that we don't repeat the mistakes that Richmond and Chesterfield made to the east. Because it will happen. We do nothing, it will happen. Now, the applicant tonight is going to need a waiver to VDOT minimum standards. And I feel fairly confident that they will get it, and I'm going to make the motion for approval tonight. But having said that, once you start making exception to VDOT minimum standards, then you start narrowing down the opportunities for spacing on Route sixty. We no longer have our enhanced access management standards. And you can argue maybe they were too stringent or maybe not stringent enough. But one thing for sure, if we don't have something over and above VDOT minimum standards that carries forward the vision for Route sixty that we want, you will see Route sixty to the east in Chesterfield and Richmond happening. And we won't have to do a thing. It will happen. So, this is much for this board as it is for the next board and the board after. You need to learn. The lessons are there. And you need to have a vision that carries forward, not for today, not for tomorrow, but ten, twenty years from now. The median that we have that signifies is emblematic of a rural county with the trees in the middle, it will look like what you see in front of Chesterfield Mall. It will go away. The lanes have to come from someplace. It will come out of the median. Something to think about, something for the people in this county to think about. It's the ordinances and it's planning that will make the future for Route sixty for this county. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of ordinance zero, excuse me, O dash twenty twenty-three dash oh-eight.
Incorporating the.
Or incorporating the.
amended proffers.
The amended proffers. Thank you.
Second. Any discussion, questions, comments? Roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byler?
Aye. Okay, motion passes five oh.
Under new business initiation of an ordinance text amendment to address landlocked parcels, planning director will summarize this matter.
Sure. So, we've come across a number of parcels in the county that are landlocked. The ordinance here also prohibits flag lots. Flag lots are not only a part of the parcel, it's one way to create a flag lot. But in Powhatan County, in easement, in access easement, also constitutes creating a flag lot. If you'll recall, one of the reasons you want, places have discouraged flag lots or outlawed them is because of the transportation system. You end up with these flags that are maybe thirty feet apart, each one of them providing access onto a road. Do you have a cluster of driveways in close proximity to each other, thereby degrading the quality and function of the road? It's probably the number one reason for prohibiting them. However, we still have a situation in Powhatan County where you do have sizable numbers of lots in the county that are not accessible. And we need to figure out what the resolution is to that so that we can offer our residents some options for them to be able to utilize their property. So, we're proposing that we conduct workshop with the planning commission to be followed up with one with you. And I'd like your permission to begin that process.
All right. Any comments, questions for Mr. Sorillo?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Sorillo, you have a backlog of things that you want to take to the planning commission, okay? I have no problems with examining this, but where does it, where does this sit in your priorities, okay? Is this something? You're in a little bit of triage, I believe.
And is, that is accurate. Yes. That is accurate, and it's a question of which issues seem to come up most frequently and seem to be the most pressing, to be honest with you. It's definitely difficult to sort of get a sense of what all of the issues are at this point. The transportation and subdivisions and land use are obviously way at the top of that list. I've seen more than a few of these situations arise in the past month. So, it feels as though it would be, you know, something to at least begin a conversation, if not to then at least pursue the revisions to the ordinance. I will add that to your point. One of the, one of the workshops that we'll be having at the next planning commission meeting will be on slaughterhouses, the boutique slaughterhouses. And it is also my intention to come back to you at your next meeting with the continuation of a discussion about the addition of industrial uses in the Commerce Center zoning district. So, hopefully, I'll have a new person on board by then and be able to start to get my head above water. But I do appreciate that question.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Sorillo, can you define what a flag lot is?
So, I can't give you the exact definition off the top of my head. But if you imagine a flag pole with a flag waving at the top of it, the flag portion is the, is the portion that is isolated or landlocked. The pole portion is the part that goes down to your access, your easement, whatever, public access, public easement. That's usually a road in this case. And so, that, and that same narrow piece is generally, you know, less than fifty feet wide.
What is an easement?
An easement is a legal document that recognizes someone's ability to act, in this particular case, to be able to use someone else's property to access your property. There are a number of easements, though. You can have a public easement in the case of the Kwan's, for example. That's in public access easement. You can have a utility easement. There are all kinds of easements, but basically, the easement in general is a legal document that provides two, two parties in agreement that one of the, one of the party is able to access either a utility or a creation facility or whatever, or in this case, they're on, they're on a parcel.
Right. So, an easement is not a flag lot?
Easement by itself, I would peacefully struggle with this. I, where I come from, we would not consider an easement a flag lot.
Right.
However, it, I think it meets the intent, but sorry.
So, the, the point that I have with this is you made a comment, in Powhatan County, an easement and a flag lot are the same thing.
An easement can serve the purpose, so there's two ways you can have a flag lot. It is either an extension of the parcel itself, so it's part, it's all one parcel. It is the parcel itself. I imagine it's just the flag. It doesn't have the pole. The easement is either an extension of the actual parcel of the land, which is a narrow sliver of land that goes down to a road. Or in Powhatan County, it may be an easement, which is the access easement, which crosses another person's land.
I'm not an attorney. I'm not a planner. But an easement and a flag lot don't seem to be the same thing to me.
May I jump in?
Well, you give me just one minute, Tom. If I own, and by the way, we're not talking about Route sixty. We're talking about other roads in the county.
Sure.
I don't even know that there is a flag lot on Route sixty. Maybe there is. I don't know. But if I'm on Jude's Ferry Road and I own a two-acre parcel on Jude's Ferry Road, or three acres, or four acres.
Right.
And I also own the two or three or four acres right behind that.
Right.
No road frontage behind that. Two parcels. I own them both.
I would recommend recombining them into one parcel so that you had access.
What if I decide that I want to build a house on one of them?
Correct.
In the rear, the rear property. And I want to create an easement. It's my, I own both properties.
Correct.
Are you telling me I can't do what I want to do with my properties when I say I want to put an easement here to give access through my property that I own in the front?
Right.
To the rear property?
Right.
You own also.
Correct. Yeah, it's a good, it's a, it's a good case. But you have to remember that that parcel could be sold in the future. And so, in order for you to develop it, you have to have access to a public road. So, you would, in essence, be granting yourself, and he's been across your own property, that would be attached to that parcel in the event that you sold the parcel in the back.
And if I sold the parcel in the back, the person that I sold it to would know they have an easement.
That's right.
Indefinitely, forever.
That's right.
They know that when I sell it.
Right.
Probably a disclosure that would have to be disclosed during the real estate transaction, I would think.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Latchner, please clear me up here a little bit.
Yeah, we actually, when we eliminated flag lots, we included easements in our definition of flag lots in our zoning ordinance. It actually includes easements, which if you think about it, makes a lot of sense because otherwise everybody just uses the easement to circumvent. You just don't do a fee simple strip. You just do easement strips and you accomplish literally the exact same thing.
Yeah.
And, and so, we had this discussion when we eliminated flag lots many years ago, and we included easements in the definition of a flag lot. So, under Powhatan code, it doesn't matter if it's a fee simple or an easement. We, we can, because the effect is the same, a narrow driveway up to a parcel in the back.
But when you have the flag lot, you now have two access points from the road. If you have an easement, you only have one access point to the road.
No, it's literally, if you looked at it on a plat, it would literally look identical, except that in one, the easement version, the lines would be dotted, and the fee simple version, the lines would be solid, and that would literally be the only difference between the two. If you looked at a plat of an easement going back to a back parcel, or you looked at a fee simple flag going back, they would look identical, except the easement would be dotted lines and the, and the fee simple one would be solid lines. That would be the only difference.
So, in Powhatan County, if I own four-acre lot on Jude's Ferry Road and I own three-acre lot right behind it, the only thing I can do is make it one lot based upon the way the ordinance is written today.
If the, if the back lot didn't, and if there was deed at access before we eliminated flag lots, if there was already an easement there, great, but yes, to create an access point. Now, that's the whole, that's what this discussion is about.
Right.
If there's a landlocked parcel, do we want to allow an access easement?
Which what you're proposing is, pretty much what you're saying, where a landlocked parcel is obtaining an access easement to said parcel.
Right.
Landlocked parcel.
Right.
Which is what I'm talking about.
Right.
Is obtaining an access easement to the said parcel. The access easement may not be used for any subdivision of the parcel it serves. I'm not going to subdivide it. I'm just going to sell it maybe in five or ten years, or maybe in twelve months. And the plat and/or the deed showing the said easement shall be clearly marked that this easement may not be used as access for subdividing the served parcel. So, in essence, what you want to do, if I understand your right, is you want to help me out with my problem.
That's exactly right. Right. But we also want to understand, you know, there's, there's always a lot of unintended consequences. And so, this gets back to, with any rule, there should be an intent behind it. And I think, and I think the intent, although I did mention that I'd not seen easements used before as flag lots, I have to admit, I like it because we want to avoid all of these driveways occurring. So, in a sense, I think while we do need to do, I would, we need to do something for the landlocked lots. But we also don't want to compromise the quality or functions of our roads either.
Yeah, you know, the transportation component of it, you don't want a driveway here and fifteen feet away from the driveway because you got a flag lot. But if you have an easement, that easement would use the same driveway. There wouldn't be the fifteen-foot driveway.
What we have to determine is, is there going to be a separation between what we would require? You know, so that, let's say you have two landlocked lots next to each other. You know, so that, let's say you have two lot, lots next to each other and they're both three acres.
Right.
We should have a standard that says that if, if both of those are utilizing a, in, in easement, that the easement has to be separated by X amount of feet, depending on.
Property wise.
You know what Mr. Barley's describing would be a two lot private road. We do allow. So you just have to meet the private road standards. If you had one shared easement that came in, that would be a two lot private road, which we do allow as long as you meet the two lot private road standards. So that's doable.
So under my scenario, if I own four acres in the front on Jude's Ferry and two and a half acres on the back.
Yep.
Um, you can, I can do a private road.
That's right.
In my back lot.
You can do that now. Yes.
And that procedure includes your approval, by the way.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr.
Do we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So if we have a remedy, a private road, why do we need this? Um, why do we need another remedy?
I'll answer that too. I've been on this longer, so I did.
Thank you. Yeah.
You have a situation, you don't have Mr. Barley's situation, you have s- separate owners on the parcel. The guy in the back finally talks the guy in the front to giving him an easement, but he's not about to upgrade that road to a private road standard.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Do we need to make a motion or anything to tell them to?
We need a motion for that or is it just acknowledgement? Forward with the planning commission. So yes, we want.
There are nods all around.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shorella.
All right. Uh, now looking at our draft legislative agenda of priorities that will work with our legislators on, uh, lobbying in this upcoming General Assembly session. Um, we, in consultation with them, are starting a little bit earlier this year than we have in the past. So you'll recall typically uh, November has been when we meet with the legislators. Uh, but the feedback we've gotten with them is, is although the session hasn't necessarily started by then, they've already committed to various bills and it makes it a lot harder to carry something, uh, from us. So we're backing it up, starting a little earlier with them. Uh, so our plan currently is, uh, October fifteenth, uh, joint school board workshop along with our legislators, um, to present this. So tonight going through, uh, seeing what you would like to have on there, uh, staff will, uh, research any of these issues further or if there's anything you'd like added. Um, so the first, and, and this is mostly starting with last year's agenda and seeing what we carry forward. Uh, Green Ridge landfill. This is something that, uh, I believe since twenty nineteen, every year the board has carried some version of, um, uh, Green Ridge landfill item on their agenda. Uh, it haven't been so successful or the legislators haven't. They've all carried various bills, but, uh, General Assembly has either shut them down or, or watered them down to studies.
Right. Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Before we go any further, you said October.
Mm-hmm.
We have an interesting anomaly this year. Okay. Uh, Senator Hashme is our senator until the end of the year, but she will not be our senator next year. Okay, because redistricting. And so we're talking about in October, have, who, who would we have here? Um, Senator Hashme is, is not going to carry anything forward for us, uh, because she has a whole nother district. Uh, and we have, uh, as I understand it, one candidate, uh, from the Republican Party and one right end from the Democratic Party. So the question is, how do you do that before, before November? I just, I, I, I'm delighted we're headed in front of it. We, we got this kind of funny situation this year, um, where Senator Hashme goes away.
Yeah, and we, uh, we had thought and discussed that a little, a little bit as well and internally as staff and, and our thoughts and welcome your thoughts are so long as, as one representative is legally and officially our representative, they should be the one, one here, even if we know their term's going to expire. Um, you know, similar to how, uh, board of supervisors after the elections held, we know who will be on our next board. You have one or two meetings where, you know, the seated board still, still continues to serve. So I, I think so long as she is our representative, um, she would attend. But you make a good point that we'll be pitching legislative priorities that then in the future, she will not be the one caring for us, uh, in the General Assembly. So um, in that case, uh, you know, if we know who the winner is or we know who the candidates likely are, we can certainly meet with them um, to the side of that and let them know what our priorities are, what our issues are, so that they're not coming into it blind. Um, but our, our suggestion would be at this workshop to have our, uh, legislators who are currently representing us at that time. Uh, so, uh, Green Ridge landfill, we don't, don't, uh, have any suggestions if you wish to address this further this year, you know, kind of what different angle to take. We, we've tried traffic. Um, we've tried the environmental route, um, you know, flood plain, wetlands, um, we tried a bunch of different angles, public water, uh, and well. Um, but again, the General Assembly has not, um, really taken any of those up in earnest. So if this is something you'd like on there, we can keep it on to keep, keep the pressure and keep it visible in front of the General Assembly. But we'd have to get with our legislators, work a little more to see if there's something really definitive you want us to champion in this assembly.
Are you looking for comments as we go forward?
Yeah, on, on each item individually, sure.
Um, as far as, uh, Green Ridge is concerned, at the very least, I think we should be making a statement that and asking our representative to make a statement that we have problems with this at the very least. I don't want to pass it by with, with no, no comment at all. Uh, we may not be able to do anything effective, but it's, it's important, uh, that we continue, uh, to lay out that we're opposed to this.
I agree with that.
Um, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
We've tried things. We've, um, met with former Senator Sturtevant, he patroned bills. Uh, one was something that I had crafted about transportation, looking at the percentage of heavy trucks lowering the level of service. We asked for that information for the Route sixty study to see if there was any decrementing of levels of service. Didn't go anywhere. So unless in consultation, we can come up with some specific legislation, I would defer to our representatives in a workshop of how we can try something else. Just saying we're opposed to it doesn't work. That's not a strategy. You have to have something in a form of a bill. Uh, you can always, you know, try resolutions and studies, but that doesn't do anything this year of the, this upcoming session. So my recommendation would be to meet with our elected representatives to see what's out there possibly that we've missed that we can use to head off something that we've been opposed to from day one.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, it's a pleasure of the board to, to keep some version of that on. We'll, we'll work and see maybe what more definitive we can come up with. Um, then reimbursement for local share department of social services cost, uh, this has been on there for a number of years now. Again, we pay about fifteen percent of the cost, uh, in pass through money. So, uh, continue to lobby and try and get that improved from the state. Uh, then previously we had a couple of bills related to the costs of no absent, uh, no excuse absentee voting. Uh, in consultation with the association who lobbies and works with that, uh, group the most, um, just doesn't appear that that there's, um, uh, an interest in the General Assembly to make any changes. Uh, so we're recommending to remove those for our agenda for now. Uh, previously we've lobbied, uh, for Powhatan State Park previously, uh, although being one of the newest state parks, it was one of the, uh, per capita lowest staffed state parks. Uh, and we were successful last year, um, with the assistance of our legislators in getting, um, increased full-time staff there to bring it up to uh, levels similar with other parks across the state. Uh, so this one will remove this year. Just wanted to share that that was an accomplishment. Um, but related to that, we will keep on here, uh, continuing to lobby for additional funding for phases two and three of the Powhatan State Park Master Plan. Um, that includes, uh, equestrian campgrounds, um, expansion of existing campgrounds, cabins and family lodges that are on their plan. Um, so we're asking the state to fund those improvements. Uh, then as always, the board has always been strong in, uh, opposing unfunded mandates from the state which are ever present. Um, so we continue along with Baco and other groups to, to monitor what's being proposed in the session and oppose those. Uh, then one new proposal here, uh, we have in our CIP and we've discussed in the past, uh, the need for a regional fire safety training center. Um, we've looked at the possibility of getting some property from the state at Beaumont, um, on that, and, and they've been receptive to uh, those types of uses in the past. Um, and there are some grants that can help fund construction of this as well. Um, so if you're interested, we can begin working, uh, more seriously with our legislators to see if we can acquire some property um, and focus in on the site there. And if so, then start applying for some grants. Another new one, uh, public safety communication officers, uh, retirement. Uh, this was something that came out of the General Assembly last year. Uh, there was a bill in the Senate that got sent to, uh, the Joint Legislative, um, Committee for Review. Uh, so they're doing a study on it, which should be out this fall. So anticipating that, um, we would be working with the legislation, uh, basically to allow nine one one public safety dispatch communication officers to be eligible to, uh, have similar VRS retirement options to those of law enforcement officers. So uh, that's something we may be interested in, uh, pending the completion of that study. Uh, and then lastly, the last year, the state passed House Bill twenty four ninety four, uh, which through the Department of Housing Community Development put new reporting requirements, uh, where each locality, uh, with more than thirty five hundred citizens has to annually submit a report to DHCD on, um, kind of the status of our ordinances, our plans and any changes to policies or plans that we've made that relate to the construction of housing. Um, so we just received the request, um, for that survey this year for the first time. It's due September one, so we're working on that. Um, but this is one where Supervisor Williams has suggested, um, that we look at proposing the repeal of that House bill requirement. Uh, so those are all we have, uh, on this year's slated draft agenda.
Those are all ones that we've been pretty familiar with, with the exception of this one pro- proposed by Supervisor Williams. What's the, what's the backing of that, Mr. Williams? Why do you, what's your purpose of waiting to, to take that out, repeal that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last session was a short session. Now the General Assembly, everything gets crammed in a short session and gets pushed through with little notice or sometimes the attention that's required. I'd like to believe this is one such bill. It was brought to our attention originally by the county attorney. Thompson sent an email as a heads up that this was something that had gone through the General Assembly that affected us and the county. So when I first got the email, I didn't pay a whole lot of attention to it. I really didn't. I've since regretted that because I've had subsequent conversations and as I've learned more, this is something we need to be paying attention to. You may recall back in President Obama's administration, under HUD, they had something called affirmatively forwarding fair housing. And that sent chills throughout the country because now you had the federal government wanting to do things with housing in different localities of different, um, the differences in the way they were constituted in terms of whether it was urban, suburban, rural, the federal government was going to be starting telling you what type of housing you had to have. Then we saw something come out of the governor's office where he said the housing crisis that we have in Virginia is due to the ordinances, the policies of the localities. And you may remember, there was a good article in the paper. Uh, and one of our neighbors, Chris Winslow, who's a supervisor over in Chesterfield, said, well, you know, if the, you want this high density housing out in the suburban rural areas of localities, send us some money for schools and roads. A lot of discussion down at the TPO among the colleagues, um, from the different jurisdictions. And when you look at what we're doing here with this reporting every year now about the changes to our ordinances and our policies as it relates to land use. There, there's a saying, if I'm going to my execution, I'm going to get shot. Don't ask me to bring the bullets. This is what this does. This is giving Richmond the ability to track what you are doing in your localities with land use and your ordinances every year, creating a database where it's easy to imagine that at one point, you're going to see coming out of Richmond, changes to the tools that we currently have from the General Assembly and the authority that we have for land use in this county and the other jurisdictions. So in essence, we get all of our authority from the General Assembly. We're a Dillon rural state. So one can easily imagine the tools that we have today, the elected officials being usurped by legislation coming out of Richmond with different kinds of mandates. Folks, you need to pay attention. We need to pay attention. Now this is getting more attention. It sailed through the General Assembly. I think people really didn't pay the type of attention, but they are now. I can tell you the conversations are going on in the different localities in the region because it's very clear. All you have to do is read this questionnaire addressing changes to your zoning ordinance. What we see is effects, offers, it's all here. Any aspect about land use and housing, we're reporting on. So in my mind, I don't want to be a part of this. I like the form of government that we have in this county with the local officials having the authority to bring forward your vision for what type of land use we have in this county, not Richmond, not the federal government, but your elected officials that work for you. So those are reasons, Mr. Chairman, that I would recommend that we put as far as our legislative agenda, the repeal of this bill.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Karnack.
Um, I believe, uh, Delegate Ware was the patron of this bill. So we're going to ask the patron of this bill to not support his bill. I don't think that's going to go over very well. I mean, he, and it went through with resounding support in both the House and the Senate. So here we are, we're going to ask this gentleman, there's obviously a good reason of why he patroned this. I mean, he's a conservative that's represented Powhatan well for decades. So, um, I will not be in support of this particular legislative agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Yes, sir, Mr. Clark.
I've also talked with Mr. Ware on this subject and I will now be supporting a repeal. At all.
Okay. Um, interesting. Mr. Ware must have had a lot of conversations today because I had one with him myself. Uh, it, it's was a short session in the General Assembly. I mean, we could, it's easy to sit and, and point the fingers. I don't think there's any doubt. I mean, geez, they're still, I think they're on the cusp of finally approving a budget down there, but I looked at this and I questioned, you know, why are we repealing, uh, or asking for the repeal as a county? And, uh, then I started looking into the information a little more and a little bit more a little bit more angst, I guess. And as I looked at it and I, and I did, I, I talked to Delegate Ware and found out a lot of good information and part of it was, as Mr. Williams said, I think, uh, to bring into a counterpart of, in a local, locality near us, Mr. Winslow, uh, who I've sent on the, the committees with down, uh, in Richmond also, and there, there is conversation, uh, but this particular bill and my conversation with Mr. Ware, Delegate Ware today, Chesterfield County played a role in writing this. played a role in writing this bill. Another organization that we often refer to as we want to discuss issues about what's going on in our county to seek guidance, VACO participated in writing this bill. This bill did pass resoundingly, as Mr. Williams said. The House vote was ninety seven to one. And it was too absent. The Senate vote was forty to zero. It's possible they could make mistakes, absolutely. It's possible they could rushed and went through it. That's a lot of them doing that to, to, to go down that road and, and say that. I looked at the survey, I think Mr. Shaw and I had sent it out earlier this afternoon. When I looked at the survey, what's, what is it that they, they want to know? What is it Richmond wants to know? The first thing I'll tell you, whatever Virginia wants, if they want to call for it, as Mr. Williams said, it's a Dillon state, they get to call for it. If the federal government wants to implement something, they're going to implement it. But I looked at these questions. There's seven of them. And I did have the question as to how long does it take to do this survey and complete it? Do you remember the answer you gave me, Mr. Shaw?
I think I said four minutes.
Correct. We're going to invest four minutes to do this survey. That could provide information. But when I looked at it to Richmond, when I looked at it during all of your FY twenty three, did the locality have a proper policy enacted pursuant to Virginia code, dot, 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 dot? That was the first one. Provide a link to where the information regarding locality's proper policy may be found. Do we have a proper policy? I don't think we do. During FY twenty twenty three, did the locality adopt a new or amend existing proper policy pursuant to state code fifteen two twenty two ninety eight, twenty three oh three, twenty three, et cetera? Next one, during all or part of FY twenty three, did the locality have a zoning ordinance in effect? Did the locality adopt or modify existing provisions of its zoning ordinance? Our zoning ordinance is online. It's available to the public. Now, is Richmond lazy? Maybe, okay. But all the information, now I won't say all of it to my knowledge, but I will say it looks like to me most of it. Provide a link to where your locality's subdivision ordinance may be found. It's there. When was the locality subdivision ordinance last updated? It's online. The, during FY twenty three, did the locality adopt or a new or modifying existing provisions of the subdivision ordinance affecting the development, redevelopment, or construction of a single family or multifamily housing? Modifications may include any changes to the locality's administrative provisions related to the locality subdivision ordinance online. Please provide a link to where the locality's comprehensive plan may be found. It's online. It's public records. And there's seven of them. But I'm not going to support asking Delegate Ware to repeal a bill that he sponsored. I won't be supporting that. Mr. Chairman. Everything else with this, I'm okay with. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Sorry.
No, no, please go right ahead.
A few years ago, General Assembly in its wisdom decided to tell all the localities how they would construct a comprehensive plan and required us to have high density nodes whether we wanted it or not. We were told to. And our comprehensive plan was changed to reflect that. Density is way beyond anything we ever thought about in this county. There was a crime. And in the next term, it became optional, went away. The only reason that happened is because the jurisdictions pushed back. Now, the information that they're gathering, all of the things that Mr. Farley said are absolutely spot on, they're looking for the changes. And are the changes happening as fast as they want them to in the direction that they want them to? That's what we're talking about. Government gathers information on you for only one reason. Not to be benevolent, but to tell you what you're going to do. So I'm sorry, I understand, I understand, I've already lost this vote, we have, have three votes, but not a conspiracy theory at all. Just a heartfelt concern that when the government starts gathering information about how you run your county, about the decisions that you make. We have laws to protect us from getting into things that we shouldn't be doing, to tell us what we need to do to look more like Fairfax County. I have, that, that, that gives me great pause. I, I, I'm sorry, that's not a direction I want to go in, and I'm very concerned about that. I don't know what's going to happen with this information, but it's being created for a reason. And the reason isn't to give us more flexibility. Okay, it's exactly the opposite. So I understand that the majority of the board doesn't want to go down this path. I'm, I'm sorry about that, but that's the way it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, yes, ma'am, Ms. Carmack.
Um, I guess I look at it a little differently. I don't look at it that they're gathering information to force high density housing into Powhatan County. I think that's a, a long stretch for the questions that they're asking. If you think about government, Mr. Williams, you've often said government shares information. You say that repeatedly. What do we do when we want information? We go to one of the eighty five next jurisdictions next door called VACO. I guess I don't understand how the dissemination of this information is any different than anything else that they collect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, answer Mrs. Carmack's question.
Absolutely.
Governments do share information. For example, we share information with Chesterfield. I can tell you where we don't share. It's called economic development. We compete. Every locality competes against the other locality for economic development. That is where we're different. We do share information. And for example, I've always encouraged my staff to pick up their phone and call their opposite number in the Henrico or Chesterfield and the planning department. How did they handle this particular situation? What did they do with this particular problem they were having with traffic in this type of situation? Yeah. Always been an advocate of that. This is different. This is not sharing information. This is being required to report information to the folks in Richmond that's going to be used to address what we do in terms of land use. I didn't say high density, but high density is in there because they're encouraging high density housing. So there's a difference between sharing and reporting to a central repository that can be used to craft legislation to change the authority that we have for land use in this county. That's what I'm saying. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Ms. Carmack, I can understand why you might say that. Maybe I'm just a little bit more suspicious, okay, that this comes on the tail of the governor asserting that the housing problem was due to local ordinances. And that got backed off. And so now we're gathering information about local ordinances. So it is where it occurred and when it occurred that also concerns me. So I would, I would admit to being much more skeptical and erring on that side than, than you. That's not a, not a complaint of yours, it's just that, that's me, not you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I don't, I don't really go down the path of putting the fear in people. You know, I just kind of, and I do look at it maybe a little bit differently than Ms. Carmack and Mr. Williams, Mr. Cox. I just sit here and listen to the chief assessor talk about housing affordability, portability is at its lowest it's been since nineteen eighty four. I listened to, you know, we're, we're going to be like Chesterfield or Richmond and have driveway, 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 business, 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 business. And I've listened to it for probably ten years that we have ninety two to eight residential to commercial component of how our taxes are paid. We're not the only locality going through these struggles of growth. There's a good article that I was sent to today in an email about Goochland. It's a very good article. I will post it out. I don't know if anybody will look at it to read it, but I, I'll make sure it gets posted out. It's an extremely good article on Richmond dot com. There's live interviews and it gets in there to where the struggles that's exist in this county right here. You know, we go through a budget season and you know, I'm in my, I'm at the end, December thirty first, I'm out of here. And I don't mind telling you, I'm out of here. The, the, but the thing that gets me is we've had years of people on the board saying ninety two to eight. And nothing's changed. And so I see campaign slogans now, ninety two to eight, you know, nothing's changed. And we talk about, we don't want to be Chesterfield. I agree, we don't want to be Chesterfield. We're not going to be Chesterfield. I don't think anybody that's on this board or running for office, anybody wants to look like Chesterfield County on Midlothian or Hall Street or Short Pump. But I do think that every year as a budget season comes around, I listen to people talk about taxes. Taxes are so high. Taxes are so high. Taxes are so high. How are the taxes going to get lowered? How are you going to lower the taxes? You don't want to pay high taxes? You're a citizen. You get up and go to work every day. You live in a beautiful county that I think is a very well-run county. We get audits all the time financially and many other ways. They all seem to come out really well. We get applauded for them. But the question is, how are you going to lower those taxes? Want to make it difficult? You, you are, we are in a competition for economic development with Chesterfield and Henrico. And guess what? We're losing. You've been in it for years. We're losing. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm like everybody else in this county. You know, I pay taxes. I own property. I don't want my taxes any higher than they have to be. But to keep saying ninety two to eight is where we at residential to commercial, and you're not doing anything, you know, in a proactive way to do some change into that, that, you know, kind of singing to the choir with a little bit of fear. You know, we can't do this, we can't do that because we're going to have this, we're going to have that. I don't mind providing information, gathering information and giving it to Richmond when it's public information. It's, it's online. You go on the website and get most all of it. I won't say you can get it all, not going to say that, but you can get pretty much all of it there. And if the average price or, let me rephrase that, the median price of a home in Powhatan County is four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. And I'm, you can talk about the whole state of Virginia or Goochland or Powhatan or Chesterfield or wherever. Prices are high. The economy is difficult. Interest rates are higher than they've been in twenty years. What are we doing? Four people on this board voted to take the tax rate to sixty nine cents this year. That was an effort to keep your taxes lower. But what are we doing about attracting businesses to this county? How are we going to bring some of those businesses in? You know, and maybe you're getting a little bit of my frustration of this because I listen to people say, why do we have so many auto parts stores? The five of us, we don't get to sit here and decide how many auto parts stores come into this county. That's not our decision. If you, if you are a corporate corporation and you, you're automotive parts, you can come in, pay your million, two million, three million dollars. And if you're, if you're successful, great. Apparently those corporations think they can be successful in this county. That's why they have five of them here. I was in the car business for quite some time in this county. You could take your cars to the shop. Hopefully you don't go but once a year for a state inspection. Maybe you go for an oil change or two, but you go to a shop, pick any shop you want and try to get parts and see how long it takes you to get parts. Very often it's a little while. They're not just that, that glance. And there's a lot of automotive repair shops here. We approved one for rezoning tonight. That's going to bring another automotive repair shop here. Well, that citizen company, they feel like they can come into this county and be profitable. It's not our place to decide if they're going to be profitable. It's our place to decide that it's going to look good, it's going to be safe for entrance and exiting. It's going to be having some similarities of how everything else looks in this county. I just don't see the, the point of, you know, we're going to provide information to Richmond and all of a sudden they're going to come and say, boo, you guys are all, your land use is all in, in terrible shape. Your, your, your comprehensive plan is out of sync. If they did something like that, like they did before, as Mr. Cox said, look what happens the next election. Here's a, here's one for you. Elections have consequences. That's what happens. Anybody else would like to comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, this whole issue came to our attention because of our county attorney. Mr. Lackney, when you described what was going on, your last line was, please note that these reporting requirements appear to me to be potentially onerous. So we need to be thinking about this now. Could you elaborate on that at all?
Well, I mean, Mr. Shaw said he can do it in four minutes. So I guess I, I was incorrect that it was onerous. It seemed like a lot of data to have to gather together and put on a list, but if, if staff doesn't believe it is, then, you know, I was just speculating how much time I thought it would take to put all that together and based on VACO or Local Government Attorneys Conference I'd been at and discussions from other county attorneys, what they thought was going to be involved in doing it. So I will stand corrected if it can be done in four minutes.
For, for some localities, it absolutely would be onerous. For us, the answer to most of them was no, so just move on. But if the answer is yes to any of them, then there's follow-up questions, additional information, so.
Okay. So next we have C. That's our constitutional officer. Ms. Carmack?
Regarding this, candidly, it's kind of brought to our attention that we should discuss this in closed session regarding raises for the constitutional officers. I personally think the size of these raises, I would feel more comfortable putting this into the budget cycle for next year. And candidly, a lot of our constitutional officers have already gotten sizable raises. They've also gotten a five percent year over year. And I'm going to take, I'm going to take a little bit different stance than you, Mr. McClung, on the kind of discriminatory thing. When, when you become an elected official, you know your salary, kind of like us. We know our salary. We, we know what it is. We make twelve grand a year. So I don't, me personally, don't really feel this overwhelming, like, oh my gosh, I have to compensate the constitutional officers at the same rate as a county employee. They're, they're not exactly the same. A county employee and a constitutional officers are not one in the same. That's, that's all I have to say to start.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cox.
Yeah. There were, let's talk about changes for constitutional officer salary that Changes for constitutional officer salary that already occurred. Um. We didn't change the cost. Of the job. We increased the pay raise for the person going into that job. The job itself stayed the same. We had new people moving in and we increased their salary. For that job. With one of them, we actually decreased the amount that we were paying for that job. The only one that really changed. Was the sheriff's office and because that was a raise that had unbeknownst to this board. Had been made a year earlier. And we felt like we couldn't take it back. Uh, but more importantly. This is a, what we have in front of us is a system. Okay, that says this is how you will remunerate, this is how you calculate what. A uh constitutional officer receives. And that's, that's very different from anything that we've ever done before. Fact is, we're not obligated to provide anything other than uh what the comp board does. We do. I think we should. I think that's important. So, um. Mrs. Carmack, I'm I'm with you. This is belongs as part of the budget cycle. Uh, if we have money in the budget, that's good. We need money in the budget for other things also. I don't feel an obligation. We have to run out and spend it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McClung.
I did want to do a closed session, but um. We voted not to. But anyway, the um, I'm going to ask Jamie Timberlake come up here in a second. To uh go over some of how far off we are on these numbers on the locale. We used the same localities, asked Mr. Timberlake to look at this for me. We looked at the same localities that we did during the Berkeley group. And um. Their. Process that they did, everyone was very happy with that process. So we compared the same process with the constitutional officers. To see with the same localities that was listed. With the Berkeley group when they did their study. And um, and we promised the constitutional officers years ago that we would look at this. But we have not done it yet. And that's why I've called it discriminatory against some of the, I mean, some of them did get raises, some of them didn't. Some of them asked for them, some of them didn't, but it's still not right that we're falling, we're still falling behind the localities around us. Especially for people that's been tenured here for many, many, many years of service. They're not getting paid. Nowhere near what the localities around us are are at right now, so. If you can enlighten us with that, Mr. Timberlake, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. The purpose of this discussion was not to get involved. In this proposal. It was whether that we actually asked very clearly. Are we going, what are we going to do with this? Are we going to examine it at a later date or not? That's the only thing about it, not to get into the discussion of what it is, why it is, or where it is. This was a very. Mr. Lackney, this was very strict.
The the subject matter is whether it should go on a future work session.
And that's, that's the limitation on it, Mr.
I'm proving to you that it should go onto a future demonstration. A future discussion. I'm going to prove it to you. Mr. Tim Lakes.
Uh, that's outside, that's outside the motion.
Me personally, I kind of think that is germane to the motion, but I'll refer to the county attorney. When Mr. McClung says he's trying to show that there is a reason to justify. Why we need to put this on a future workshop. Uh, when we've already had one board member, actually two of them say it should go to the next budget. Season. Um. Is, are we germane or not?
I I think it's close enough that you have the discretion as chairman to determine that it is.
Oh, that's, I like, this is politics at its best, right? Um, it it's. That's right. And that means I got to make a decision whether it's the right decision or the wrong decision. Kind of used that. I'm going to uh. I'm going to let Mr. Timberlake. Explain himself or explain what Mr. McClung has brought him up to, but I am going to give you a time limit on it.
Sure.
Three minutes.
I I don't think it'll take that long. You've seen it.
One minute.
I'm, I'm knocking it out. I don't have the copy of it for me. You were. Mr. McClung has explained it to a T. I took exactly what Berkeley did. Use their zones, everything, Melissa helped me work out their whole zones and we call it Berkeley. I found out later it was actually designed by Pivo, mostly our own employee. Um, but use those exact formulas to apply to tenure. That's the only thing we're talking about here is tenure. Um. All, every other constitutional officer other than myself has been recognized for tenure. So you can call it what you want. That was that formula and how you came up with that number was compensating them for their previous experience and tenure. I am the only constitutional officer in the county who that has not been addressed. In my sixteen, almost seventeen years in office. Uh. Longest-serving constitutional officer, um, third longest-serving county employee at this point. Um. So. Whether you want to consider it discrimination or not. I mean, it it's pretty obvious. Every other uh constitutional officer has had that, but the formula itself. Was basically taking nothing but their years of service, putting it in a zone, their years in office, putting it in a zone, giving it its points and calculating it out. This was only for me. When when this started and I brought it forward, this was only for me. Last week is when, a week before that is when I edited all the other constitutional offices. Based on Mr. Byerly's actual comments at the last meeting. I said, oh, well, if we're going to talk about it, then we can put everybody's on there and talk about it. They've been compensated and I have the dates, I have the amounts of compensation. If we want to go through it, we can. I'm not saying they don't deserve it. I'm just asking why I don't. And when the most recent one happened in the last fiscal year, it was not in any budget. Nowhere in the budget was it cheap missed. Uh, the treasurer just came for and I got one. When I spoke to Mr. Byerly about it, he said, get in line. And then a few months later, I was told, what's my number? And my response was, I'm not going to ask for a number until the employees are compensated. The employees have now been compensated and in the county's approved. Fiscal year budget is specifically money for compensation, not other things. I'm not, there's lots of other budget money that's in there that you can figure out what to do with, Mr. Cox. But there's specific money in this budget. For the comp plan that was left over. There's more in there than you used on the employees. So to say that you have to wait till next fiscal year or anything doesn't even make sense. It's there. To do all of them, uh, you know, and again, I'm not asking for that. I was clear in my email that I can't speak for them. I'm only speaking for myself. But I've given you the example of. There is money in the budget and this is how, if you applied it to each of their salaries and includes the registrar, how it would work out. My only intention was to get my own salary straight at this point. So maybe I misconstrued and added the other uh, you know, officials or the other constitutional officers in there, but that was only. Because I thought I heard what Mr. Byerly was saying. I'm glad to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions.
No questions for me.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir. I do have some comments, though. And the last thing that I just heard there was. Mr. Byerly said, Mr. Byerly said, then it was, I thought Mr. Byerly said, so let me clear about what Mr. Byerly said. Mr. Byerly said. That there was uh Ms. Alexander, who I thought. Is a voter registrar. She's not a constitutional officer. She's the one that we should look at. And I think I know that Mr. Shardine can make that decision on increasing her pay without talking to the board supervisors. As long as it's something in a reasonable amount. I didn't say constitutional officers. However, um. When Mr. Timberlake quotes me as saying, um, get in line. I did say get in line. And I'm going to go off again a little bit on my my, what I'm, what I'm talking about by the get in line. We got into this situation because of a couple of different reasons. Number one. Um. The county administrator that made some raises. That probably should have been discussed in front of the board and the public. Um, number two. This board, um, Mr. Williams being the only one that's been here, I think this is his twelfth year sitting on this board. The rest of us were new and we didn't know every year we should be reviewing um. The comp and pay plan. That your HR director should be bringing that forward and telling us that we need to have the review of this. And in doing so. That compensation plan had not been reviewed since twenty eighteen. So that would be twenty nineteen. We were not on the board. Mr. Williams was. Twenty twenty, we arrived. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Never knew nothing about it. Maybe we should have asked. I don't know. Uh, maybe that's part of, part of our pro, our our fault, but. I'm not the HR director. When. I hear. The HR director and a a finance person's involved in some of this. I I, you might have seen me reach over to Mr. Shardine and my question was pretty simple. Does the finance. Manager, whatever Mr. uh those uh title is. And the HR director, do they work for you or do they work for constitutional officers? Work for Shardine. County attorney or county administrator. I do not think that the Berkeley group, I don't, I know they didn't uh review constitutional officers. I don't think we asked them to. Right?
They are specifically excluded from the.
Right. Would you say that one more time, Mr. Cox?
They were specifically excluded from that.
Right.
Whole process.
We were very concerned about, as a board collectively, about the morale. Of the employees. And we were also. Trying to figure out, how could we get more competitive to retain? Employees and recruit employees. I'll agree with Ms. Carmack. Constitutional officers are just like us. They're elected. They're every four years with the exception of the Circuit, uh Clerk of the Circuit Court, uh Ms. Dobbins is every eight years. When you get elected, you know what your pay is. As far as I'm concerned, when it comes to. The voter registrar, Ms. Alexander, there should be a conversation. As far as. The rest of constitutional officers. Bring it up during budget season. That's where I stand on it. So if we're going to take a vote right now, somebody wants to make a motion as to what you want to, or you have a comment, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I'm I'm a little bit puzzled over your comments about. Myself somehow being responsible, I think was. Implored or stated. About comp and class not being updated, you know, since twenty eighteen. Um. I'm not the HR department. Um. A lot of things go on in county government that I'm not aware of. Witness what happened with the salary increases, that none of us knew about. None of us. Uh, not probably should have been notified. We should have been notified. All that came out. It's a matter of record. There's no reason to go back and resurrect all that. What we're talking about. Tonight, and again, I'm kind of surprised we've gone into this depth, given Mrs. Carmack's motion. And by the way, I agree with everything she said. I thought she was very succinct and I was ready to vote there. I don't know why we're having all this additional discussion. Since we're here. Yeah, I have served twelve years in this county. And you know what? No, I got no raise. Not once. Nor have I ever asked for one. Because as Mrs. Carmack said, when we signed up for this job. We knew what the salary was. And to somehow equate us. County employees and the comp and class plan. It's just wrong. Now, years ago. Might remember, we had a big discussion as a county about an MOU. And it was the constitutional officers who I defended, who said, nope, doesn't apply to us. That was the initial pushback. And of course. Came around where their employees would be eligible because it was advantageous for them to be included under. Our comp and class and employee manual. But there was never any discussion about any type of equivalency for an elected officials. With our comp and class. Just the opposite. So I don't even know why we're having this conversation. I regret we're even doing it, you know, Mr. Chairman. Again, I was in. Uh, sank with Mrs. Carmack and her comments. And I was more than willing to. Lay it on the table and go from there. And I'm back to that point, so those are my comments, sir.
And I appreciate that. And when Mr. Timberlake brought out what I said, that's what got my conversation rolling. Um, the uh, the the vote, I guess, whether we. Really, you just, you're you're tabling it.
You will technically, technically, nothing happens unless some, somebody makes a motion for something to happen. So right now.
Next.
Nothing.
So we're moving on.
Next.
Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, um. Should have, we should have, I should have just stayed with Mr. Timberlake. As my comp, doing the right thing for. People that work for Powhatan County. They're elected from Powhatan County constituents. Voters and everything, but anyway, um. I feel like. Mr. Timberlake has been discriminated against. And I feel, I know he's, he's been with the state, I mean, with the county a long time. And um. I would like to make a motion. That we discuss. Mr. Timberlake's. Salary. At our next board meeting.
So the motion is by Mr. McClung. You want to discuss Mr. Salar, Mr. Timberlake's compensation at our next board meeting. Is that correct?
Yep. And I'm going to ask for a closed session because you'll get it, so.
Do I have a second? Mr. Laxley, may I ask you a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Does Mr. McClung actually need a second for that motion?
Does he need a second? You can request, you can request one, which you did. It's your discretion.
Right.
Requested one, he does.
Okay. No second. Motion fails. That'll bring us to our final comment period. Public comment boards open. Want to come up to speak as an individual? You have three minutes. Speak on behalf of a group, you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Frank Flanagan. I'm the Secretary of Electoral Board for Powhatan County. I'm here to request that you take a look at our voter registration registrar's salary. She's a low man on the totem pole. She's not a constitutional officer. She's not a county employee. She sits out here, but she's responsible for all the elections, all the registration, all the registered people who vote to vote in Powhatan County. She's been with the county for eighteen point, excuse me, twelve point eight years. As her tenure. She was not looked at during the uh passing comp plan. She didn't get anything. Now, I will say that I talked with the county administrator and HR director this week. They were very kind, very nice, and we're going to try to do something, but I'm asking the board, please do something for our county registrar. And soon. You have employees that are going to get payroll uh pay raises this week and their check. She's not getting one. And it's not fair. Please help her. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone online?
Nope.
We'll close the public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
County administrator comments?
No comments.
Board comments?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. McClung.
I'd like to thank everybody who came out to my town hall last week. It was a packed house, a huge success, and. I'm also having another one on September twentieth, seventy-eight, at seven to eight PM at the company two where, uh, public safety building. And my topic will be Monakin Soil and Water Conservation District. I have two representatives speaking. On their program and how we can benefit in the county from that. Thank you.
All right. That'll take us to, uh, we went into closed session.
Alrighty. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matter. Consultation with legal. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such a consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body concerning the stable subdivision. And whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby authorize discussion of four state matters in closed meeting. Need that as a motion?
So moved.
You have a second? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Unclosed session.
Do you have the exit or do you need me to do it?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay.
Ready?
Bring us back in, Mr.
Let us know when we're ready. Ready?
All good.
All right. Members of the board, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And only such matters as were disclosed in the motion by which the closed session were convened were heard discussed or considered in the closed session. Need a roll call.
Aye.
Mr. McClung, aye.
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 Aye.